Is everybody ready? We'll call this meeting to order. Hello, everybody. We'll begin with a moment of silence. Now, if the members will please rise to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, our first item of business is to swear in our newest coordinator.
Mr. Chairman, Members of Board. I feel like I've been here before when I look at Mr. Wizniewski. Because he has been here at many a meeting in his history. What a wonderful occasion it is to have the opportunity to re-swear Mark Wizniewski this evening. Judge Matt McCoyd of the magistrate court of DeKalb County and of the city court of Decatur is going to do the swearing in. Judge McCoyd is an attorney, obviously, but he also has taught at Emory Law School. He's teaching now at Georgia State Law School. He teaches for the National Institute for Trial Advocacy. He's a very experienced judge and a wonderful human being, and he resides here in Decatur. So, as I saw he and Mark introduce themselves to each other, I didn't realize they had not met before. I said, "Here stands two of Decatur's finest citizens," and I truly mean that. They really are. So, Mark, if you would come down, I will serve as the official witness to sign. We have multiple signings, and there are actually two oaths, and then we'll have it notarized.
Raise your right hand. You repeat after me. I, Mark Wizniewski.
I, Mark Wizniewski.
Wizniewski, I apologize.
That's all right.
Do solemnly swear that I will execute the duties of the office of school board member.
Do solemnly swear that I will execute the duties of the office of school board member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
That I am not the holder of any unaccounted for.
That I'm not the holder of any unaccounted for.
Public money do this state.
Public money do this state.
That I am not the holder of any office of trust.
That I'm not the holder of any office of trust.
Under the government of the United States.
Under the government of the United States.
Or any other state.
Or any other state.
Or any foreign state.
Or any foreign state.
Which I am by the laws of the state of Georgia prohibited from holding.
By the laws of the state of Georgia prohibited from holding.
That I am otherwise qualified to hold this office according to the Constitution and the laws of Georgia.
That I am otherwise qualified to hold this office according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of Georgia.
And of Georgia.
That I have met all residence requirements.
That I have met all residence requirements.
As defined by the Constitution.
As defined by the Constitution.
And laws of Georgia.
And laws of Georgia.
Furthermore, I, Mark Wizniewski.
Furthermore, I, Mark Wizniewski.
Wizniewski, I'm sorry, I was trying.
It's all right, it's all right.
I apologize. A citizen of DeKalb County.
Citizen of DeKalb County.
And a resident of the city of Decatur.
And a resident of the city of Decatur.
And being duly appointed under the laws of Georgia.
And being duly appointed under the laws of Georgia.
By the Board of Education.
By the Board of Education.
For the city schools of Decatur.
For the city schools of Decatur.
To serve as the at-large district representative.
To serve as the at-large district representative.
On the Board of Education.
On the Board of Education.
Until a successor is elected.
Until a successor is elected.
And sworn into office.
And sworn into office.
For the remainder of the term.
For the remainder of the term.
Of the former at-large district board member.
Of the former at-large district board member.
Who resigned effective August 1, 2019.
Who resigned effective August 1, 2019.
In the special election set for December 5, 2019.
In the special election set for December 5, 2019.
And being a public official of the city of Decatur.
And being a public official for the city of Decatur.
And the recipient of public funds.
And the recipient of public funds.
For services rendered.
For services rendered.
As such official.
As such official.
To hereby solemnly swear and affirm.
To hereby solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of Georgia.
And the Constitution of Georgia.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Matt.
I didn't get all that, though. Could y'all just run through that one more time?
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. Mr. Wizniewski, having been properly appointed under the laws of the state of Georgia, having taken the appropriate oath for the office, is hereby declared properly installed as a member of the school board of the city of Decatur. Congratulations, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge McCoyd. And I just want to say, I mean, this is tremendously generous of Mark to be willing to do this and of Cindy to let him. You know, we appreciate, I mean, this is really service. It's a large imposition, especially after you've stepped away from it. So, we appreciate your being available and really being willing to step in.
Well, I'll say that it was truly an honor to be asked, so thank you all for doing that. And I'll share that it's a much simpler way to get on the board this way than the other way.
But we're happy to have you.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll move on to our agenda. The first item of business is the approval or revisions to the agenda. Do we have any?
Just to add that we need to resume exec session following the regular meeting.
Okay. Next is to approve the minutes. We have, I think, two sets of minutes.
The July 16 regular monthly meeting and the July 22 board work session minutes.
Okay, do we have any revisions? So, these are presented in the board packet. Do we have any revisions to the minutes for the July 16 regular meeting? So, those will be approved as presented. Do we have any revisions to the July 22 work session? For those who approved as presented. All right, next is our spotlight, Claremont Elementary School.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Curtis Armour Jr., and I am the proud principal of Claremont Elementary School. As one of two Title I Target Assisted Schools in the district, Claremont uses student assessment data to qualify students to receive academic interventions. Our presenters tonight for the board spotlight are Ms. Paris Hartnett, our Title I lead teacher, Mr. Norman Upson, our Title I parent professional, and also Ms. Quinesha Jackson, our parent liaison. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Armour, for this opportunity. So, in preparing for this presentation, I realized that it wasn't so much of what I say, but how fast I could say it. So, I'm going to try to quickly do justice to our program while honoring your time. With this presentation outline, our introduction, we'll talk about our instruction and then our involvement. And I'll leave this up, just an overview. Title I is a federal grant received by school districts that allow the district to provide additional academic support for any student to assist in the effort of ensuring that students meet state academic performance benchmarks. So, although this isn't where our work starts, I'm going to start here with the selection process. This is an image of our ranked participants list that displays student data, and it actually calculates every student's academic score into a point value. It's formulated to display the greatest academic need from the top to the bottom. And as you can see, in the total points section, these nine first grade students qualified to receive Title I services in reading. So, that data and list is then converted into what we call our monthly log. This is an example of what Norman and I, what our schedule looks like for monitoring documentation. The students' names have been blacked out, but you can see that we serve in the first, in the second column, we're serving students in Mondays and Thursdays in reading, and then on Tuesdays and Fridays in math. This log is then converted into something that's a lot easier to look at, and it's our schedule. So, this is how our schedule looks on a day-to-day for a second grade group by teacher. So, the top number is just the number of students that we're pulling from each one of those classes. This is just, again, a second grade reading group. Those segments are 45 minutes, by the way. When we think about our goals, we actually share our district goal, our school goal, and our school goal on our parent and family and school compact, which is what I like to call the contract. It's where we set our goals and commit to what we're going to do in the classroom, the parents at home, as well as the students in both settings, home and school. I call it like the 5-4-3 agreement. Another example of how we set goals in the classroom are on our group, well, in the past with our group data form, where we looked at a group of students that we were serving. That, the blue highlighted row there is just the number for the group average, how they're doing. This is an example of a tracking sheet that's tracking the reading fluency of a group of third grade students. This is obviously what helps informs, inform our instruction. And that was, that's on a bi-weekly basis. Here is how we aim to implement the Level Literacy Intervention with Fidelity and the Math and Focus curriculum. That provides resources that addresses the common core state standards taught through real-world and hands-on experiences, ways that we address reading in the classroom through phonics. Here are a group of kindergartners using reading strategies that I taught them from my training with REEP to identify short vowel sounds. Our other friends on the right are doing some work on their, on the table with short vowel sounds as well. Another phonics activity that we did is having a group of second graders actually find team members to create words where the vowel teams made the long vowel sound. They followed up with creating a list, or several lists, of their own. So, during this, after reading an informational text titled Police Cars, a group of still-in tree kindergartners had more questions about the vocabulary associated with police officers. So, our school resource officer, Officer D'Amico, stopped by. They really enjoyed extending the lesson through an authentic learning experience. On the right is a group of second graders who identified several unknown words in an informational text as a group, and we later, of course, reviewed those with them. Fluency, they love this activity. They actually have fluency cards that progress, and they compete with themselves, really, from goals that they've previously set, and collaborate with each other to meet them. Students are provided with 50/50 balance between literary and informational texts daily, which we agree contributes really to their engagement. And this is just a group of friends who are reading informational and literary texts. These third graders here are using a comprehension strategy that's called Writing About Reading, where they are responding to reading, which is sometimes the next appropriate, the next appropriate step. When planning math lessons, I try to keep in mind the eight mathematical practices and be intentional about that. Here's examples of what just a few of that, what few of those look like when implemented. So, this second grader didn't realize that her work, well, both second graders on the right, didn't realize their work was actually a multiplication problem, but they're using, showing their thinking by drawing objects to solve that problem. And then, our friend on the left here has decided to use a number line to add two-digit numbers. So, that was her preferred strategy. The second mathematical practice is using the right tools. There are, we have objects and tools readily accessible for our young learners to manipulate. We know that that's important for their conceptual understanding. So, there are a group of kindergartners on your left using a hundreds chart, and a group of first graders using chips to solve problems. And then, the last mathematical practice is attending to precision, which is simply checking your work. I put a picture here of Mr. Upson saying, "What better way to check your work than confirmation from a teacher?" Or the Google, there's a student using a computer there. And then, also making sure that you have visual representations, which is what our group of kindergartners on the right are doing to check their work as well.
Hello, my name is Gunsley Upson. I am a parent with Title I. I do enjoy doing this more because I get more of a hands-on relationship with my students. And I do that by forming the relationships and learning targets, crew agreements, student check-ins, and exit tickets, which are one-on-one with every student. The smaller groups help that more cultivate it and more hands-on, and they tend to take a good liking to it.
And so, just the reason that we're standing here, our results of, we set a goal which was aligned with our school and district goal. Seventy-five percent of overall students served in Title I either met or exceeded their expected growth targets. We have your overall data here on the left, and we just spotlighted on the right a couple of our top achieving grade levels. I want to leave that up for just a second.
Can I ask, are these still the growth targets where the typical result is the median is 50% of students meet their growth targets? So, what you're showing here is actually quite extraordinary to exceed it by so much.
It's really extraordinary. Actually, I think if you compared this to other Title I programs, you would be below 50% probably meeting or exceeding. This is really exceptional.
Thank you, thank you all so much. Before we sit, I do want to just take one moment while we're keeping the momentum going. We actually, and to keep it going with over the summer, we incentivized our summer program this year. We explained to our students and even solicited a few of our third grade, third graders as student teachers to assist our kindergartners so that every student would start the summer with just a few pages of their workbook already complete. So, by the time we hosted our parent meeting, the parents actually had a chance to look at their child's work to preview, and also the leaping lizards admission coupon that the students knew about to bribe them with over the summer. I got text messages and phone calls, like, wait, what, what can I motivate them with again? We have gotten, so far, we've actually received a completed workbook back every day since the first day of school. And again, having the children work on their workbooks prior to the summer really did help build that, you know, buy-in with the parents and their, and the students' confidence as well to keep going and following through with it. One parent, a quote from a parent, "The part that he really enjoyed the most was a short-term reward. Do two pages, then place a sticker on the trail, a larger, more special sticker for completing that unit. This was magic for him." This was from a student who asked if they, although they completed their workbook, could they please have it back? Ms. Jackson?
So, I don't like to hear myself speak, so I'm going to leave it there. And I'll talk loud enough so everybody can hear me. I hate to sound my voice. Like, I haven't even watched the opening day thing yet. It's so weird. So, my name is Quinesha Jackson. I'm a family and parent engagement leader for Title I. Because I'm not prepared. They had, like, points and stuff. I don't have anything, I'm just not ready. All right, so the vision statement for the Title I parent and family engagement is, "The family-school partnership believes that students, I mean, parents, schools, families, and communities working together can create meaningful partnerships that ultimately lead to significant gains across the board in student achievement." And that's straight from the Google website. I didn't add anything, it was straight copy and paste. Okay, so, how we do that is, we partner with everyone from community, from BDF, as Karen said, the police department, restaurants who donate food at their time to parent events. Oh, can y'all hear me better? Okay, and so, this is just one example of the events that we hosted. It was in conjunction with Title I ESOL and also special ed, made special appearances. So, we just do things for ourselves. We actually open it up to the community and other departments in CSD. So, this one was not so much academically motivated. It was more home and how to engage your child. Dinner time, downtime at home, to get them talking about school, things that, problems that they may have. So, it was engaging a student while cooking their gravy. Right? That's fun. I like it. And so, this is an example of the flyer. So, whenever we send out a notification and flyers, we also ask if we need childcare, transportation, transformation, just so that we break all those barriers so that we get past the conflict. And we also host it in the community. Sometimes they can get to the school, sometimes they can't. Sometimes we post it here, which is also close, is like a midpoint center point for all of the families. And as you can see, I wish I had a pointer. We've, Tiff Treats donated their cookies. And so, we were able to donate, I mean, decorate their cookies really good. And ESOL teacher actually made the icing by hand. So, that was something else that, you know, community donations that really helped. So, here, we, one of my friends, Kelly Nettles, who was, she was the teacher of the year at Claremont. She was the PE coach. And she gave me as a gift a mother's napkin, it was called the Key Jar. And so, in this jar, it was like little strips of paper with talking points. For example, it was one about if you could become a superhero for one day, what superhero would it be? And so, we gave those to the parents, and the parents kind of talked amongst themselves and said, "Why?" And so, that was something that they could take home, and at dinner time, they could have a conversation with their kids about. And so, these are pictures of them that actually had, and the kids, and that cookie, they're great. And so, as a parent liaison, that is my ultimate goal to actually, not just academically enrich the families, but also outside of school and at home, to help bridge that gap between school and home. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you all, that's really impressive. Great work.
Congratulations. That brings us to public comment.
We have two people signed up for public comment.
Ms. Schneck Snyder and then Ms. Howson.
Welcome back to you all. Welcome back again, really. I'd like to invite everyone who participated in Decatur dinners on Sunday, August 25. We'll have a hundred dinners in one night with conversations on race and equity. And the community has really come together to make these dinners possible, and I'm grateful for all the partners from City Schools of Decatur, Better Together, the Decatur Housing Authority, Decatur Education Foundation, Out of Hand Theater, One Small Change, and other community leaders. It's more important now, more than ever, that we have these difficult conversations and move forward with change in our community and schools. Thanks to our CSD Equity Team, Lilly Huddleston and Mary Banks for their work, and thanks to Garrett and Louis for participating in our test friend dinners and for hosting dinners at your home this time around. We really appreciate it. I hope each of you board members can participate, and Superintendent as well. And we have over 800 people signed up already. And it's such a diverse crew of people, it just is, I'm so excited. Go to decatur dinners dot com to sign up as a guest or facilitator or host. There's still time, we do it all tomorrow. On another note, I want to voice my deep disappointment that we were not able to start a composting and recycling program at City Schools of Decatur at the start of the school year. We had a very successful pilot program at Renfro last spring in a generous grant through the partnership with Agnes Scott. We had hoped to restart the program again in Renfro this year as a pilot and move it out to the other schools in the first few months. It was an extremely important initiative with absolutely zero negatives. When we started our pilot in April, Renfro was throwing away 40 bags of trash at lunch every day. After we had put in place the recycling and composting, we reduced that to three bags of garbage, three bags of garbage. This program is low-hanging fruit. It's easy to implement, has wide support among parents and students, and it's the right thing to do. We have a petition with over 300 signatures from parents, and I can get that to grow. That was just a first effort. And we have a long list of volunteers with parents who are willing, and teachers who are willing to support in this process. Recycling and composting models good behavior for our kids and follows the core principles of the city of Decatur schools. I ask each of the board members to make a strong commitment to this project, to make it happen. And I also ask Director Noel Malouf for operations to get behind the effort with his full attention. And I ask Nutrition Director Allison Goodman and Facilities Director Sergio Perez to lend their full support as well. And I would like a follow-up to my request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Howson?
Would you mind pulling that microphone so we make sure it makes the recording? Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have no idea whether or not this is the right form. I just knew there was a board meeting today, and I wanted to voice my...
May I interrupt? Could you please tell us your name? And generally, we ask if you sort of let us know your connection to Decatur or to the system.
Sure, Kisia Howson, and I have two children, a sixth grader at Renfro and a ninth grader at Decatur High. We just entered the City Schools of Decatur last year with my daughter in eighth grade from the museum school in Avondale. So, my concern as I entered the system and saw the calendars for next year and the one, I'm sorry, for this year and the drafts for the following years were the number of days that we were extending past what was typical, right? And not being a part of the system, didn't really have an understanding for how some of those decisions were made. When the process is done, I saw that on the city of Decatur site. I think we are in the comment or parent still adjustment period.
It's actually an agenda item tonight, we'll be discussing, but not voting tonight.
Okay, so I just wanted to...
Your timing is perfect.
I just wanted to ask the board, as you are talking and considering, and I did go on the website today and see the results of the survey that was taken for this school year, the next year in particular, and just wanted you all to consider alternatives to extending past that either before Memorial Day or before June 1st, and the timing in between and the number of breaks, as I think some of the parents might have voiced in their concerns, in their written concerns. That was my only objective. Okay?
Thank you.
Superintendent's comment is next.
I, we have a big agenda, so I'm going to reserve comments for next time.
I have a, I have a few items. First, congratulations to everybody for a successful start of the school year. It's going to be a big, big year, thanks to everybody. And we have a brand-new tally street, so one more time, congratulations to Noel and the entire team for the terrific effort to get that beautiful building, beautiful LEED-certified building, open. We're very proud of it. It's going to be with us for a long time to come. And it was a big lift to get it, to get it ready, but it all got done. I wanted to say a word about the opening day celebration, which I really thought was terrific. I always loved the opening day, but I really thought that this was a particularly good one. Uh, Dr. John Hodge, the, the speaker, um, was, was just dynamite. And let the message be the one, and then I thought it was great to follow it up with the extra mile winners who have been the one, you know, for a lot of our kids. So I was gonna read off the names of the teachers who won the extra mile award. Um, that's Michelle, and these are, uh, I guess most of y'all know this, but these are awards that are um, nominated by the, by the students, for, you know, for whom these teachers have been especially, special. So Michelle Reynolds from Glenwood, Dana Wertz from Westchester, Julie Parker from Westchester, Desiree Cabrisus from Westchester now at D H S, Angie Prophet from Fave, Artisha Chaney from Fave, Shonda Edwards from Fave, Christine Kramer from Renfro, Johnny Stroy from Renfro, Leah Locke from D H S, and Shelby Coffen uh, from, from D H S. And so, congratulations and a big thank you to all those teachers for, for being the one for somebody. And the last item here is pretty neat, uh, it's a congratulations to D H S Senior Jordan Walker, who not only was selected to participate in, and did participate in the uh, M L B High School All-Star Games Player, but was actually named the Player of the Game. You know, this is a, apparently an inaugural game, uh, that held up in Cleveland, Ohio earlier this summer. That's a pretty, pretty tremendous accomplishment, so congra- congratulations to Jordan Walker. And the last thing I wanted to repeat, uh, Claire's uh, uh, invitation or urging for everybody to participate in these Decatur dinners. We did uh, participate in the first round of them, whenever that was, earlier this year. And, and, and really, these, these are, I think everybody would enjoy it, uh, and, but not only enjoy it, but really learn a lot. I think these are really important conversations that we're having, and it's really important to sort of broaden the range of people that you're having it with. So we do a lot of talking to each other, but these are really great, this, this is a great way and a great event to bring people out and talk to other people that you don't know about these issues, um, citywide. Eight hundred people is a tremendous turnout, and so, I just urge everybody to get on that website, decaturdinners.com, and be part of it. And that's all I've got for the chair's comments. Which takes us to consent items. We have a bunch of items on consent. Do I need to read them all off?
I don't think you need to, there's eleven items.
Do we have a, a motion to approve the eleven items on consent?
Move to approve the consent items as listed on the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so that motion carries. That brings us to informational reports, and um, we begin with the Equity Spotlight.
Alright, I invite our new Equity Coordinator, Dr. Banks, for her first presentation to the board. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As was just shared, my name is Mary Ann Banks, I am the brand-new Equity Coordinator here at C S D, and I'm here to talk to you about who in the world I am and what in the world it is that I actually do. Our agenda for today is going to be relatively simple, three things. Gonna talk about who I am, what I do, and what we want. And you'll see as I go through that I'll just spend a little time kind of elaborating on each. So, some people wonder why C S D has decided to make equity a focus. Let's be honest, this school system has a lot of swag. We are known throughout the state for great test scores, great facilities, strong teachers, and for providing a great educational experience. Yet, data tells us that a disproportionate number of students of color in C S D have been unable to get their swag on. For those unfamiliar with that terminology, I mean that for some students, things are like this picture that you see before you of a baseball game, that many of you have seen before. There are those who can see over and beyond and enjoy the game. And there are those, like the little one who's down there in the hole, who can't even get over the fence, can't even get to the fence to see what's going on. Research, I'm not, I'm sorry, I apologize, um, in response to the reality of the young man in the hole, the district had multiple conversations about how to make things equal. Yet, way back in the sixties, we all realized that making things equal didn't necessarily make things fair, as again you see here in the photo. All three people are equal, still not having a fair experience. Research showed us that some students needed more than others to make things equitable. So the system did a lot of introspection and work and came up with a district improvement plan, focused on creating an equitable environment for all students. Since that time, you have been working diligently toward the elimination of disparities for students of color. The district has trained administration and over eighty percent of teachers in courageous conversations about race, a protocol that asks us to look at our personal responsibility and culpability in eliminating systemic racist outcomes for students of color. The system has established practitioners of this protocol, who will be able to do more focused work to support schools and teachers. And they have established a new discipline protocol that uses restorative practices to begin to rebuild the trust and heal the wounds created by our school system's past. And we know, and we all know, that there have been and there are still wounds. I won't rehash the statistics we already know regarding students of color in this district. Disparate discipline outcomes, differences in test scores, grades, graduation rates, people commonly refer to these things as the achievement gap, thus intimating that there is something wrong with students of color, who exist somewhere below their European-American and Asian-American counterparts for mysterious reasons that stubbornly just won't go away. The fact that communities of color have been wounded is key to our conversation about student achievement in the district. You see, there is nothing wrong with students of color, there is no gap. Scholar Gloria Latson Billings makes that clear when she says that disparate outcomes for students of color are not an achievement gap, they are an education debt. A debt that we owe to students of color to act to eliminate the disparities that systemic racism has built, so students can be liberated to achieve to the utmost levels of their ability. C S D has been a forerunner in the southeast for not only acknowledging the debt, but also because we have displayed action toward the elimination of disproportionality of students of color, particularly for African-American students. This is where I come in. Now, I thought about telling you the whole story of my life, beginning at age seven. And then I talked to Dr. Duty, who actually said that I only have fifteen minutes, so I figure I better speed things up. You've heard the adage, "It takes a village." Well, it does. C S D did not get to a place of disproportionate outcomes overnight or student by student. These problems are deep, systemic, and sadly, they exist across the United States. And systemic problems require systemic solutions. These should be approaches consistently implemented across the district by a number of individuals who are committed to making things better for us all. Thus, my work as Equity Coordinator, I have the honor of coordinating such initiatives. I studied multicultural education at Emory University where I received my PhD. I have been in the field of education for over twenty years, first as a ninth through twelfth grade English teacher. Then, I spent eleven years at Clayton State University, serving as the Jimmy Easley Professor of Multicultural Education and Director of their Center for Academic Success. Throughout these experiences, I have had the opportunity to work toward, write about, and study addressing disadvantaged populations and reducing disproportionality. I've done a great deal of work toward these goals, such as writing curriculum, implementing diversity trainings, doing research, and building programs that support and engender equity for students as a whole, and African-American students in particular. But enough about me, let's talk more about the work that I have been hired to do here at C S D. My work in the district revolves around four areas. The area of pedagogy, in which I work to address curriculum and instruction. The area of practice, in which I work to support our teachers' journey toward cultural hu- humility and culturally relevant practices. The area of policy, in which I help to support, monitor, and create equitable policies in the district. And the area of community, in which I work as a liaison between the community and the district regarding issues of equity and develop district partnerships towards supporting and increasing equity. And my slides, which won't move. Okay. Now, I'm sure I don't have much time left, so I will provide some brief examples of my responsibility and share some recent work we've been doing in each of these areas. Pedagogy. As the Equity Coordinator, I make recommendations of, schedule, facilitate, and provide professional learning in culturally responsive pedagogy, biases, stereotypes, and other relevant areas. Our most recent work in this area has revolved around partnering with the Department of Curriculum and Instruction to amplify the work surrounding culturally relevant teaching. We are also working to spread restorative practices across the district. Last year, we introduced the work to admins and counselors. This year, ten of us will become trainers of trainers, so we can continue to push the work out across the district. In the area of policy, I assi- I assist Dr. Huddleston, the Executive Director of Equity and Student Support, in conducting needs assessments, analyzing data points, and collaborating for the periodic review and analysis of data. I serve as the district liaison to the school equity teams and attend meetings of school equity teams. Our most recent policy work focuses on restorative practices, and we are also in the midst of transitioning the Equity Action Plan into a different format for better alignment with the D I P. District Improvement Plan. I know you know this, but just in case. In practice, I am responsible for keeping abreast of relevant practices and current research to keep our equity professional development as relevant and as effective as possible. For example, our most recent work has involved me visiting principals to identify their, their equity team and their faculty's needs in the area of equity professional development. In doing so, I noted that they wanted to continue to push forward on the work, the work that was started in Beyond Diversity, but they were a little bit unsure where to go with that. So to address that need, we created a year-long agenda and implemented work sessions toward that end goal. In this, each school will push the equity work out to teachers, students, and parents, tackling a different topic every month, and using the protocol introduced in Beyond Diversity to process that information. In the role of community, I am responsible for maintaining relationships and frequently, frequently communicating with parents, students, educators, principals, and the community um, about district equity efforts, as well as any upcoming activities or opportunities appropriate for each group. I also serve as the initial contact for reporting of equity concerns, Title One and Title Nine. Most recently, I have been meeting with community stakeholders and working toward establishing a number of ways for anyone in the community to provide feedback, share concerns, or ask questions regarding C S D and our equitive, equity initiatives. In short, City Schools of Decatur wants to pay its education debt to Black and Brown students, and I, and others in my department, will do all we can to see that the debt is paid. So to conclude, that went too fast and too far, let's go back. Alright, yes, I'm happy to be here, and I'm actually really looking forward to this work. Toward next steps, we are working on even more professional development regarding equity, a deeper dive into the work being done on the ground in schools, more community partnerships, strengthening restorative pracn- practices, and transitioning the Equity Action Plan. And that's all I have, thank you, any questions?
If I may, um, I, being new again, um, I've missed out on some of the discussion, but I've had the opportunity to see much of it from being involved with D E F. But um, as you were talking about it, it struck me that there's often changes within academic programs that require planning not just within the grades, but how that has an effect downstream or upstream, however you want to phrase that. Is there a similar dynamic here, and if so, what does that look like?
If I'm understanding your question, you're asking, is there planning that takes place in lower grades that influences upper grades?
As an example, sure.
Um, sure, I think that we are looking at equity with a holistic lens that includes the entire district. So I think when we do the work, we try to gear the work towards what's most appropriate for the group that we're working with. You know, if we're working with elementary, we're talking about elementary, if we're working with early elementary, we're talking about early elementary, same with secondary. However, in that conversation naturally precedes a conversation about how you push this forward moving on. So I'm not sure if that answers your question.
Yeah, it, it, it does, I mean, it's um, maybe have some follow-up on it, but I, it's, it's, it strikes me that that's something that, as the children evolve up through and come to the next levels with greater awareness, greater capability, uh, that there's a, a need to be prepared for those ramifications as well, is sort of where I'm coming from, so.
Similar to what we're doing, Mark, with our uh, P B I S, the Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports, where we want to have very similar expectations as students move from one grade to another, but the wording of those expectations may become more mature as they become more mature and they understand better what those are. I think that's something we're trying to do in multiple areas, to make sure that we're, we're consistent and we're not just keep doing one thing at K two, something totally different at three-five, something totally different at six-eight, to have that continuity there.
Thanks, thank you.
Pleasure meeting you, thank you for your presentation, I look forward to working with you. Um, and you spoke a little of being on the ground level, and so, when I think that, I think parents and children. So, how do you feel, or what do you feel your role will be specific to them? Will you be meeting with parents, do you, do you believe, or, you know, what are some of the things that you, how, what kind of attachments do you think you'll have to the parents in that regards?
Great question, I hope to have very close attachments to the parents, I think the parents in the community are the heart of the district, right? So it's important, and you don't know what's going on in the schools through the perspective of the students unless you talk to them. So it's important to talk to the students, it's important to talk to the parents. I've already met with a few parents, just touching on some things that I'm trying to learn about in the district. But we also have future plans for parent panels and other things, just to kind of gather some perspectives.
So may I ask if you can give me just an example of when you met with a parent, no names or anything, but what is, what is your initial feeling um, on, on the ground level of how the community is feeling?
Okay. The parents that I met with recently were parents who were concerned with um, issues for their children. And in discussing these issues with the parents, I heard two things. One thing is that they are really happy and pleased with the way in which Decatur is being proactive about trying to approach and address these issues that are so important to them, but then also that they feel like there's more to be done. And so, you know, we have to continue to work and move and not just stop in a space and say, okay, we've talked about it, it's over. What comes next, what can we build, what can we create, what policy can we put in place, in order to make things better across the board?
Awesome, and then last question, have you felt any negative feedback, or felt, felt anything negative from any parts of the community, maybe not welcome, or just curious to see if there's that other side that you're feeling yet, which we know is there?
Yes, indeed, I have spoken with a few, again, I've only been here a month, so, but I have spoken with a few members of the community who have expressed concern, for example, the immigrant community, who express concern about language and our ability to address multiple languages, and we're like putting some things into place to address that, and we've been talking about that. And I've also spoken to some African-American members of the community, who are just really concerned that we're paying... who are just really concerned that we're paying attention to their students' needs in the district. So that's all that I have.
That's perfect. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Dr. Banks, and welcome to CSD. I'm excited about your role, and it sounds to me like you will be having a lot of communication at the school level, which is really exciting, and I feel like that's really where the rubber meets the road here. So I'm excited for that. And also, I'm curious if you have plans to work together with the SLTs, the School Leadership Teams?
Definitely, definitely. There's no way that you can do the work and not work with the leadership team. They have to be. The teachers are a key. The leadership team is key. Everyone plays a part of trying to build equity in the system. It has to come, of course, from the top down, because if it's not supported by the top, then it collapses underneath. But once the top has affirmed it, then it becomes the responsibility increasingly all the way down of each of us in order to make it happen and build it out. So yes.
Thank you.
Welcome, Dr. Banks.
Thank you.
I've just been making notes. And some of these aren't necessarily comments on what you've said, but comments to ourselves to remind us of where we started and how we keep making progress. You know, the comments about what members of the community may be feeling, I think it's important for us to maintain a sense of immediacy and urgency and a focus on measurable progress or quantitative, qualitative progress. And that we remind ourselves to look at all the actions that we as a board take through the lens of equity. You know, one of the comments you made about the gap made me think about when you then said needs assessment. And I hope perhaps as we move through PBIS that we're able to balance that with asset assessments as well, because there's a tendency to focus on what's missing instead of playing to strengths. No, it's not a, you know, just a comment. You know, I'm glad to see that we've got another person on staff, because this is, it's a heavy lift. And I'll say something I said before, this isn't new, but there is institutional racism. And if we don't do what is necessary to move forward and erase or remove or pay the debt, then we're complicit in institutional racism. So it's our job. We've got to change it. So I appreciate the work you're doing. Welcome.
Thank you. As my mom would say, when you know better, you do better. So now we know better. Thank you.
Let me just echo that, and I think you already know this, but we're, I mean, we're very excited to have you. And I think lucky to have you. And I think you're going to find that you've got very strong support from the board, that this is a board and a system that not only wants to pay the, well, that wants to pay the debt, but doesn't necessarily know how to pay it. And so we need you to help us figure that out. And along those lines, I just wanted to put in a plug for, I think it's very important that transforming the action plan into the format and the template, to me, is very important, because there's so much that needs to be done. It's really kind of easy to strike out and put your attention here and lose sight of what needs to happen there. And to focus on long-term cultural humility things and maybe not address some of the policy and systematic issues that could be addressed more immediately. And so I think if we have this plan, we'll not only be able to make sure that we're, you know, we have a comprehensive, thought-out, balanced plan that we're going to be able to actually stick to and implement. It's also going to make it much easier for us and for you to keep support, which you have. But we need this plan so that we all understand what's happening, so that we can help communicate this to the community, so that when people say, I see, I hear a lot of words, but I don't see a lot of action, we need to be able to say, well, here's what's happening. And so I wanted to say how important that particular item is to me.
We have that in play, and we will make it happen very soon.
I have no doubt that you will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Appreciate it. Great job.
Okay, our next item is the Tally Street Upper Elementary Final Monthly Update.
And make sure you notice that word, final. A regular monthly update anymore, because now it's here, so.
Good evening. I'm Billy Heaton, the principal of our newest school, Tally Street Upper Elementary School, and I'm very excited to be here.
I'm just here first.
Okay. First of all, I want to congratulate Claremont for all their excellent work as the other Title I school in the district. I'm looking really forward to working closely to make sure that we have those processes in place at the K five level that's really going to move the needle for our kids. Well, this says it all. The American flag makes it official. So when I was able to raise the flag on the first day of school, it made me feel really good, knew that the school was in session and that we truly did make it. A lot of concerns that I was seeing on Facebook and just parents calling me and reaching out to me were around the transportation issues. And I know there's still some concerns at certain intersections and streets around the neighborhoods, but in terms of the transportation pattern around the school, I honestly do not feel like it could be going any more smoothly. The picture right up there is of my instructional coach, Dr. McFadden. She and I are out there every morning and ever afternoon directing traffic into the parking lot. It's a little tricky at times, trying to figure out if someone is going straight down Tally if they're taking a right. So I did send a gentle reminder out to the parents last night, saying, can you please turn on your turn signal a little bit closer towards the school, so we will make sure that we're safe and off of the road. But it's been great being out there every morning, seeing the number of walkers. And so I really feel like that we have a good plan in place. We've got cones that force parents to go straight in the parking lot and actually go with the flow that we have designed. And you can see that they actually exit their students off of the right there in front of the schools. And then we have teachers out there and faculty and staff out there every morning, opening the doors for our students. There again, you just see some kids getting out. We've got a temporary bike rack out now. I know another one is going to be coming soon, but the students are really excited about having that, and we see a lot of bike riders in the morning. Signage has been so, so important, and I want to really thank Noel and Courtney and Sarah Jones for providing these signs for Tally, because it's really made a difference. The buses only, so parents can clearly see that this is where cars cannot park, clearly indicating that you can only take a right turn, you know, indicating where parents can pick up walkers, and so it's really, really been helpful. Some additional no-left turn during carpool. I have had some upset parents who just want to still take a left, and I have to put on my principal voice and get out there and ask them nicely to go down to the end of the street and turn around, so they can come back up and turn right into the parking lot. And then we finally put one of these out, so this has been helpful, too. That once our faculty and staff goes into the school building at seven forty-five, that's when learning starts, and we want our parents to know that if you come after seven forty-five, we want you to park and walk your child in into the school. So we want to send that message. That instruction is very important to us. Media Center, so, so proud of our media center. Very happy that our media specialist, Jill Hansen, loves yellow. Yellow is her favorite color. So she has been really pleased with that. Also very happy that, and I'd like to say thanks to Susan Hurst, for really working in the startup budget. We were able to put together some startup funds that allowed us to have almost nine thousand books in the library. So that is a pretty good start when you compare that Fave has around thirteen or fourteen thousand, so that's not too far off, and knowing that all of our books are brand new. So I think we have a really good start there. A couple other pictures of the media center. Very excited to have this workspace in the back. Teachers have access to come in and do groups there. We had our PTO board meeting there last night, and so it's just going to be a really good space that we can utilize for small groups. This is a front entry. I just, still, one of my favorite parts of the building is just coming in and seeing the really high ceilings. I think it's really pretty. Over on the left, you see Eva Park. She's my admin assistant, and that's the area that we have that she works out of. Playground, that's the most important part, of course, for the students. So our basketball goals are up and running. Kids were out there playing today very happily. Definitely want to say another thanks to Noel for the picture on the right. As a parent of a disabled child, you know, you often don't see playground equipment that is accessible to handicapped students. And so when I asked if he would be able to make that happen, he did, and I really appreciate that. So I look forward to seeing some of our disabled students utilizing that. This is our playscape. So it officially opens tomorrow. They were laying a lot of mulch down this afternoon to make sure it's safe for our students. And so I know they're going to be excited about that. Really large soccer field there that is really nice, that will be accessible to our community members, especially around the Winona Park area. Circles and morning meetings. We are working towards becoming an IB candidacy school, but we're incorporating some EL education practices, and one of those practices are morning meetings. Also, we're doing circles, which goes along with our work around restorative practices. So every morning, third, fourth, and fifth grade in every classroom, we start off with a morning circle and a morning meeting where they have conversations about classroom expectations and any kind of conflicts that they're having in their classrooms. And it really sets a nice tone for the start of the day. We have learning targets for everything we do, so our teachers even have learning targets for our crew meetings. And two of these are great, that, you know, appreciate what makes each of my crew unique, and then remember that you can say something about someone else. Just a few other pictures for classroom instruction. It's going really, really well. This is our art room. Amy Radford was a longtime art teacher at Fave, and then she left for a year to be home with her children, and she came back this year at Tally. And she's doing some really amazing work along with Colleen Dunbar, who was our halftime art teacher who comes over from Fave. And so they've been doing some weaving this week in art. And it's probably one of my favorite rooms in the school building. It's really, really nice. Here is a few of our teachers providing instruction in the class. The one down on the lower right is made my heart sing, because it's the first sign of a one-on-one atmosphere in our school. So this is a fourth grade classroom, and when I went in there, every student, you had a Chromebook in front of them, and they were actively engaged in that. Tally rallies. This is another thing, feedback that I got from the K three parents. They really like Community Circle, and I really like Community Circle. It was a great way to end the week. And so we wanted to bring it up to the three, four, five, but we didn't necessarily want to call it Community Circle, so we changed it to Tally rallies. And so we had our first one last week. Our school, we were hoping that we could get all the kids in there together, along with the parents, but we're concerned a little bit about the capacity, so we've broken the whole school into Group A and Group B. So last Friday, Group A had their Tally rally, and then this coming up Friday will be Group B. We have a band that has moved up with us, and they have been renamed the Tally Cats. Dedicated group of parents and teachers who are willing, they're going to be there every week, you know, for both groups, so that's exciting. Some more pictures of the kids and the teachers. And then just finally, we, our crew, a teacher hung this in the window of our classroom that our crew has all hands in. And I really think that that perfectly summed up this challenge of opening this new school. It took everyone's hand to be in all the hard work that it took to open up the school building. But, so, thank you for giving me the opportunity to lead this great school. And I have a little gift. Unfortunately, PTO sold so many that sizes are probably not correct. So I will be reaching out to get your exact size, because we would like to provide you with a Tally t-shirt. But I wanted you to just see what our official t-shirt is. And a student wrote an individual, thank you, sorry, to each of you.
Awesome. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, that's a great presentation, you know, just terrific, beautiful building, great job.
I have to say, I think Billy set the standard for how to open a brand-new building. It is remarkable to see how smoothly things were running, even right on the very first day. I think that is really a talent you have, and I really appreciate all the work you put into it and organizing everybody and figuring out all those processes and procedures and all those kind of things that help make a school run, and our other schools have had years to develop. And you really just figured out the best of the best and borrowed, begged, and stole from whoever you needed to in order to get it in place. So great work on that. That's really awesome.
Thank you so much for the presentation, Billy. I had a quick question. On, you mentioned some of the issues you've been seeing on Facebook and everything, so I was just wondering what kind of things you were thinking we need to be implemented? And how many crossing guards do we have out there?
Yes, sure. I just, when parents tell me, I'm like, I will teach your kid to read every day of the week. I do not know traffic.
You're right. It's formal.
That's Noel.
That's Noel. You're right.
I figured I'd need to field some of these. We have, we've been working with the city for a while on the traffic plan. There, to answer your question, there are two crossing guards now at the Tally and Columbia area, which is the toughest place that we have for crossing. We've also got Billy and his staff up on Tally Street, right at the school by the shared maintenance facility. And around the corner, they've had some police presence. And then at, sorry, Columbia and College, they have a crossing guard there as well. And I believe that they've installed now two crossing guards at that intersection, so that the kids that are coming down Commerce, that as it turns into Columbia there, and across College Avenue. So I think they have two there, permanent. So there are a total of four in the vicinity at the major intersections. They're working to get the lights installed. I noticed today that the stop signs have their big blinking LEDs on. And I've been out at that intersection quite a bit since school started, and it's really, it's starting to work very smoothly, and the parents and kids all have a good rhythm to it. And occasionally, we see some rock stars walking across the street, too.
All right. Perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
Just wanted to thank you both. You've made a, both of you have been a great team. We've got the building and the structure, but then everything that goes on inside, so thank you both.
Yeah, Billy's done a wonderful job. I really appreciate the work he's done, so.
All right, our next thing is the preliminary enrollment report. Heidi? Just a reminder to you all, this is something we added last year, I think it was, because our official account day isn't till October, and it would be nice to kind of have an update of where are we earlier in the year. So these are preliminary numbers, as I know Heidi will emphasize.
I think it's attached. I don't know if somebody's going to click on it, but if... Jason, are you able to pull it up? But the big-ticket numbers are, our enrollment is continuing to grow. The number of students, however, that we add from August to August is declining, which is good, because we didn't want to keep growing at the same rate we had been. Enrollment is up in grades K one, three, six, eight, nine, ten, and eleven. Enrollment is down in grades two, four, five, seven, and twelve. And we'll fly through these graphs a little bit. Can I advance it, or? So if you look, our current enrollment as of August sixth was seven, five thousand seven hundred and twenty-three. Today, it was five thousand seven hundred and four. So it's going to keep fluctuating until all the kids who don't show up are withdrawn, and the new kids who didn't realize, they moved from New York and they didn't realize school started until after Labor Day come. But this just kind of gives us a good pulse as to how we're doing. And so the line on the bottom is just how many students were added between the school years and then the total numbers. So you can see we're declining, which, the good thing about this is this is very consistent with what our projections were saying. And so that's a good thing. This is what we planned for. The total enrollment for our K two schools is there. You can see we have some nice, smaller, reasonable numbers. I don't know if you remember last year, some were hundreds and hundreds of bigger than others. So this is nice, and there's plenty of room for some kids to come. And you can just sort of see how the grade breaks down at every school. This is, these are our numbers for our three-twelve enrollment. And you can just kind of get an idea that we are continuing to add at our upper level as well as those larger classes are moving through. You can see the average number of class sizes when you look at Renfro and the high school. For several years now, you're going to have classes over... For several years now, you're gonna have classes over four hundred when you look at tenth grade down. So next two years, we've got our smaller classes moving out and then the classes stay pretty consistent. You can do the math by adding, when you look at this, adding the Fave and Tally, you can see that there's like between four hundred and five hundred students in a grade, in those grades. And here's the overall, kind of if you just want to look at the class size last year and this year, some are up, some are down. No tremendous changes. One thing that is of note is that the twelfth graders are down, which means graduation rate was really high. We didn't add to the twelfth grade class, which is a nice thing. We like when that happens. And then this graph is something, last year Garrett had asked for the kindergarten and I added the first grade too because I thought it was kind of interesting that our, our numbers that we're adding between kindergarten and third grade is also decreasing. When you look the report, like this past two years, we've only added fifteen and seventeen kids. So if you look at the difference between the four thirty-three when they were in kindergarten to the four fifty when they were in first, first grade, there's only seventeen kids added, whereas in prior years, we were adding thirty or forty kids. So that just shows where, how that's working. So that's kind of the total add. And then the nice thing is that those kindergarten and first grade classes are holding pretty steady, which ideally we would have like no growth and just know what's coming and keep rolling. So that kind of shows what that, what that is looking like. If you want to see it by grade band, you know, we're adding about a class of students, a little more than a class of students at our K five levels and a little more than about two classes at middle school and three, three classes to four classes at the high school if you think of a class being around twenty-five kids. So that's kind of where the kids are coming in. So that's, that's where we are right now. We have been this year also doing live enrollment counts, just to kind of see the difference. And the one that was done closest to these numbers was about sixty, there were about sixty students who hadn't come yet that were enrolled. So that's kind of where we're at. Questions?
Quick question, you might not have this in front of you, but would you happen to know the demographic breakdown of some of the new students we have coming in?
I didn't do that, but when we update in October, I can disaggregate it all by race for you.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, Heidi, first of all, thank you. When I saw your, this last slide that you're showing, my initial reaction on the K two was, right, there's the, that's the leading edge of what's gonna come. What was most interesting though is then I looked at each individual grade and it's really a second grade drop that's causing that, right, K and one.
So our last year's third grade, or actually our current third grade class is one of our...
He's the biggest, it's the four ninety-seven.
It's our biggest class, four ninety-seven. So when those guys moved up, that, that's the majority of that, that drop.
Yeah, okay. So looking at, I mean, to take K first, I remember well, it's, there's a lot more nuance there than just taking those. But is it, at least as a preliminary view, that as K and one start to be steady, that that's an indicator of where things are likely to go?
I think so. I mean, and when you look at our projections, they sort of look at us evening out around six thousand students and staying there. So if we have classes of around four hundred and fifty per class, that's what will happen. So hopefully, hopefully, yes. I, I do think that more, more kids are, are coming straight from kindergarten too. They're, they're not, there's not, and I don't know what that's about, but that, those classes seem to be coming more in line with each other instead of those really variable numbers between K and one. Which would be good if that was more predictable. I don't, we'll have to see.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
I really appreciate the addition of the slide that I asked for. It, to me, it's looking at the kindergarten, the first grade and seeing that it's around one to two percent per year. That's, I mean, urban areas are always getting more population dense. We know that Decatur's gotten a lot more population dense. So we shouldn't maybe expect it to completely be horizontal, but that, I'm very encouraged by that leveling out there. And, you know, for eight, ten years, we've been saying we get three to four hundred students per year and it's really nice to see that almost trend line. Let's get one more year out there. Let's call it a trend. And if you look at the slide, enrollment by grade K twelve, we can see that our existing eleventh and twelfth grade classes, as they move out, we're going to get two more years of total enrollment growth just as those lower enrollment classes move out. But I really look forward and hope that we hit that six thousand, you know, band. I know we built for ninety-five percent capacity for sixty-five hundred, so.
It would be good.
This looks great. This looks really good. It's very encouraging. Thank you for the work on this.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to action items. Our first action item is to approve a revision to the board policy manual.
And I would actually recommend we table that. Garrett caught that we actually tabled it the last time. I thought we had approved it. So the red line version really isn't correct and there's nothing urgent to get approved. And so if it's okay with you, we could just table that and I can update it. And then if there's anything we want to talk about, for other additions beyond that, we can certainly incorporate that. But as it's presented here, the red line is not technically correct because that other version wasn't actually approved.
Action. So we'll table the first action item and move on to the second, which is to reschedule our October eighth meeting because it conflicts with, I think it conflicts with our trip to...
Correct. We will all be on an airplane during the meeting and I don't think that would be very popular to hold it while we're on the airplane. So we had talked about potentially moving it to October first, the week before, which is a Tuesday. But if there are other dates we want to look at as well, we could certainly do that.
I believe I will be out of town the week before.
Okay.
But don't let me stop you from having that meeting.
So the whole week? Garrett, the whole week or just that Tuesday?
I will have to check. I just know that I'm gonna be in Kansas City around that time.
Oh, we're currently talking about...
October first.
First.
The Tuesday before.
Oh, sorry, I'm...
First Tuesday of the month.
But that does not work for Garrett.
Wait, wait, I've got it. I am here that Tuesday. It's like the day after that I'm gone.
So we're now talking about the second to October.
No, the first.
First of October.
The first of October.
Oh, that is a Tuesday.
Yeah, that is a Tuesday. It's good for me.
It works.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have four discussion items. The first is the board training plan.
So you should have a handout, I believe, at your table. Yes, it's called the GSBA FY twenty. It's very colorful. They were very timely. This actually arrived in my inbox this afternoon. And so we also attached it to the agenda. As you know, we need to get training hours. And actually on the back of the first page is the reminder of the training hours you need. The people who will be coming on for their first year of service will need fifteen hours and everyone else will need nine hours. Obviously GSBA is one source of those hours and we've also approached other opportunities that we've taken advantage of. But we will need to be submitting a training plan. As you can see, actually on the bottom of the back of the first page, it's got the timelines of when we submit training plans and things. They can always be changed, but we do have to submit those to the states, to the state to show that we have done the planning. So we've got the GSBA options. There's opportunities available. We often do the new board member workshop with GSBA for those who come on board and I often go to that with them and it's a very good one. And then we also have the, we often will do some sort of a training, a work session about governance training and we'll invite someone from, say, GSBA to help be a facilitator so we can get credit for that. And then the other thing that we have, which I think we could probably figure out a way to count, is we're going to want to be doing some more of our courageous conversations training. And so there are actually, there's a whole board development process with Pacific Education Group who presented Beyond Diversity and it's focused just for board members. And so we're getting pricing on that, which I could bring back. But I think it's a, it's, one possible way of doing it is to do like a Friday afternoon, all day Saturday kind of thing, so people don't have to take as much time off work potentially. And I think it's three or four times through the year. And I think that, if I remember, it's Luis who comes, who's the actual vice president of Pacific Education Group, who we've been incredibly impressed with, if I remember correctly, it's him. But anyway, that would be an opportunity and I think if we invited a GSBA rep to be a facilitator of that, we could probably get credit for that as well. So those are some things to throw out there as possible training opportunities. And we do not have to finalize it tonight, but if we could at least discuss it and start jotting something together so that at the next meeting, we could perhaps hopefully finalize it and then we could get submitted to the state what our plan was.
So we're supposed to have this submitted every year by?
I think it's October, yeah, October first, so we've got a little bit of time.
Well, I definitely would like to put the Beyond Diversity training for board members at the top of that. I think that would be very helpful.
I agree.
I agree. I agree with that as well.
Of course, I'm not gonna be attending that training, but I would like to encumber the future board to attend that training.
I'm assuming that would be after the new board members come on board.
Correct, I think it would make sense to.
Would you need to have done Beyond Diversity first?
That's what we were actually discussing today and Lily is gonna reach out to Luis to see if we would need to wait until we could get them through at least the first Beyond Diversity or not. It's a great question.
I would just like to second that, your suggestion of having the new board members attend the new training because that was fantastic through GSBA. It was very, very helpful, a nice overview. So I think that's really valuable and it was valuable to have you there as well and I appreciate that you attended with me because it was just a great introduction and you were able to explain a lot of things, so I think that's a good plan for them. Are they, so, but that's the, the election timing is...
So they would go to the February twenty-five, twenty-six one.
Okay, because is the election, is it in, did I hear that it's December, the special election?
That's the special election. That was surprising to me.
I didn't realize that is what's happening, but it sounds like there's a special election for the, I didn't know that.
I guess I assumed that it would be during the November election, but it's not.
Yes, I did as well.
So we could potentially get two new board, or two seats could be filled in November and then the at-large seat will be filled in December.
That's what it sounds like, you know.
Okay, so potentially the two board members that were...
Could possibly do the earlier one.
Right, and then if, I guess if the members unopposed, couldn't they still go?
That's exactly what I was gonna say is that it's not unusual for seats to be unopposed. And I think if we know that it's unopposed and there's a chance to get three people going to November nineteenth or twentieth, or two.
Yeah.
We could, we could, we could do it even if the election hadn't taken place. Chances are, there's not gonna be some amazing write-in campaign or something that would... Worst-case scenario is they got training on board governance.
And I think we still have to wait and see. I think the, the sign-up dates are still coming up, so we don't know officially yet, but we will by September.
It's coming up pretty soon. Do you know, Jana, when the, when you have to declare? Okay, thank you. I figured you'd know.
Don't wait till November first. Wait till November, so...
You were saying that for the other candidates, right?
So, okay, so I mean, those are all moving targets, but I agree that I think that if we could all do the Beyond Diversity board training together, that would be fantastic and we might just wait until, if we need to get, and it might be helpful even if it's not required. It might just be a good way to get, because it's a lot, you know, to get your head around it.
We will work on that. We'll talk to them some more, so when we come back, we can let you know how many hours, when it could happen, what all that looks like. We can flesh that out a little bit.
I assume that, you just said you don't know how many hours. I assume though, it would cover the six.
I think between that, yeah. I don't think it would cover the whole board governance training just because that's specialized, but I think we could cover that through one of our retreats and have it all covered then.
I like, I like that plan.
I think that's great.
Do you know the hours that we got at Savannah, were those for the last four years, school year?
That was in June.
Last June?
I think it's on a fiscal year. I'll have to double-check, but I think that would be for last year. Yeah, I'll double-check.
If Beyond Diversity does not work out, so I'd like to do that because it, not for the hours, but for the experience. And so if that is not, doesn't work out logistically for some reason, I'd like to look for other ways that we can cover the hours without essentially make work, right? Like, I mean, we're taking this retreat to Westminster and I know that there's not gonna be a GSBA trainer in Colorado, but we should look at ways that we can try to, with all the stuff that we do already.
Well, I would say that the winter conference for GSBA is very convenient for us because it's held at the Renaissance Waverly in Atlanta. And as you see there, if you do one of those special courses, you can get six hours right there. So I do think that's a viable option for us. It's a one-day commitment that you'd have to go to. And the topics are pretty good and I've gotten a lot, I've enjoyed those probably more than the actual conference. Those workshops are just very helpful, so.
You're talking about the pre-conference workshops?
Correct, exactly.
And I, I mean, just depending on who's interested, I'm interested. I'd like to get a group of us to go together because I think it's valuable. So we can talk about that, but...
And we'll see if we can get some descriptions for some of these too, of exactly what the pre-conference workshop is gonna cover. Like what are the topics beyond just the title?
So one question I have is, just want to make sure that there's not any repercussion of, for my being on the board, to make sure that, you know, are they, is there prorata, is there...
Right. No, it's a great question and it's actually something we, it sounds to me like they only worry about it if people start abusing things, right? That they're trying to use it as a way to get away with something, so I don't think there will be any concern. Whether you get hours or not won't be a concern. It's when they look at the board as a whole,
Yeah.
are in general the people in those seats getting the training hours they're supposed to, was the advice we got previously.
Okay.
Annie did earn those, those hours for your seat.
That's right.
There you go.
Seat's covered.
Okay, should we move on to the next discussion item?
Yes.
Is our property tax study and I suppose you'll give us a report.
Yeah, do, you want me to give it or Heather, you wanna?
Feel free.
We had a great meeting. Garrett, Heather and I met with representatives from Georgia State who are working on the property tax study. It was extremely helpful. We actually ended up extending it an extra hour and met for two hours. And it was just really good. It was all the right people in the room, I felt like, that we had to talk through kind of what the draft was, what we wanted to get out of it, what looked good, what needed some further information or exploring. And so we are waiting to get a firm commitment on when they can get back to us because they wanted to go back and talk with the whole team about when they could get that report finalized. But I asked, you know, are we talking like four weeks or, and pretty much, they're, they're pretty positive it's not gonna go beyond four weeks. Quite possibly it will be before that, but they didn't want to commit firmly till they could talk to the whole team. So we're really excited to get that report. I think it's gonna be incredibly helpful, especially once we get the updates that we talked through and I just have to give a huge shout-out to Garrett and Heather. The amount of work, this is a great example of the amount of work board members put in behind the scenes and reading through those reports and, you know, forty pages or whatever and providing detailed feedback so we could actually get a really good product out of it, then spending two hours sitting down with them and talking through it. I just think you're, it's gonna be a really helpful process. We're gonna get out of it, I think, what we really wanted to get out of it. We are, from the best we can tell, we're still double-checking some dates and things to make sure we understand correctly, but it looks like we are gonna have to get right on it. So when we get that report, I'm really hopeful we can actually present it at the September board meeting so we can start discussing what our next steps are regarding the senior homestead exemption because the timeline is upon us and there's a reason that we set that we wanted to have the report by September so we could get moving with the 2020 legislative season and get some actions from that. But we are double-checking that. I just don't have the final information from the city quite yet on whether or not our dates are correct the way we think they are. So we're working on that. I think that's the gist of it. Is there more that you have?
That's a good summary. Thank you.
Coming up to speed, apologies. In, in the work, is it addressing commercial versus residential?
So this is really addressing the senior homestead exemption specifically, although we have made some interesting discoveries where there are commercially zoned properties that get the senior homestead exemption and, and that was part of one of our questions of it. There are institutional and commercial properties and they actually were able to read to us from the Decatur City Code why that is and how that happens. And so there are some interesting quirks like that, but it's very much, the, the report is focused on the senior homestead exemption specifically.
And that might sound confusing, but there were, there were situations where properties had a grandfathered zoning and they had, and so they were allowed to continue to be used as residential. used as residential, perhaps if they had been previously zoned as commercial unless they rebuild or significantly improve it.
So they're actually, I mean, seniors live there.
Yeah, but also, like, if, if you look carefully, and I'm, I don't have it in front of me, and they're going to look into it to clarify formally in the report, but for example, some higher-level commercial or institutional zones did include townhomes, for example, so like, meaning that-
I think it was C1.
If it's zoned one way, you are still allowed to build that there, it doesn't mean that it only has that, so it's not like there's, you know, some old person living in a, in a, you know, storage shed or something, it's more like-
Knock the movie up.
There's actually a townhome in a commercial zone, or something that had been grandfathered in, so, yeah.
That's a good point.
But it looked confusing in the report, which is why we were confused, but they're going to clarify it for us, yeah.
Well, thank you for your work on that.
Thank you, guys. No old people in sheds.
Right.
We're against old people in sheds.
We are really against that.
Okay, our next discussion item is the Board Policy 2.4 Monitoring Report.
All right, while Dr. Holliston is coming up, I'll just remind you that we now have basically a four-phase process that we're trying with monitoring reports. So this first phase is the phase where it's just a very high-level overview and interpretation, some samples of the type of evidence that we think would make sense, and you do have a copy of this at your desk, by the way, yours is right there, Louis. And then the second stage, after we get your feedback tonight, we'll, we'll flush those things out a little bit more in more detail, depending on the feedback you give us, and we'll get a little more detailed on the data, maybe what are the actual measures we'll use, things like that, so you have a chance to give some feedback on that. Then the third phase is the actual report, and so, and then the fourth phase is your response to that report. And so these, you'll see, I've attached the calendar there as well, this is basically each month, you'll see a phase of this, and so we'll have different reports in different stages. This just happens to be the first one, that Lily was lucky enough to have August to be a Stage One for her report, and so she's the first one who gets to do it, so congratulations, it's so exciting.
Thank you so much, I didn't want you all to miss me or anything, so here I am.
Exactly, exactly, so, you want to take it away?
Sure, sure, good evening, Dr. Duty and board members, so tonight I'll be presenting Phase One of the Policy Monitoring Report for Board Policy 2.4. The, this policy includes, let me change this line, this policy includes the district's non-discrimination statement. It outlines the protected groups that are the focus of our non-discrimination policy, and sets, sets forth the board's vision related to equitable opportunities. The policy also highlights the required administrative regulations that are associated with Policy 2.4. They include the Equitable Opportunity Regulation and the Equity Action Plan. The Equitable Opportunities AR outlines the ways in which the district will comply with the letter and the spirit of Title VI of the Civil Rights Act, Title IX of the Education Amendments, and Title II of the Vocational Educational Amendments. It also includes a focus on Section 504 and the Americans with Disabilities Act. The Equity Action Plan AR includes the directive that the superintendent or designee will develop, define, and provide an equity action plan to address racial inequity. We interpret this policy to mean that the district will implement practices that foster a welcoming community, where all students feel accepted and included, regardless of race, background, or other cultural characteristics. The anticipated outcome of creating a welcoming, welcoming environment would be that students would feel like they belong. In the research literature, belonging is defined as one psychological sense of connection to or integration into their community. The second part of the policy is focused on the district's prevention of and response to unfair treatment based on subgroup membership. We interpret this to mean that the district must have sufficient regulations, practices, and internal controls, which would include supervision, evaluation, mentoring, training, legal consultation, discipline, and compliance and grievance procedures, to avoid discriminatory behavior by its staff and volunteers in the performance of their duties, and to swiftly remediate a violation if one should occur. A potential source of evidence to measure student perceptions of belonging would be selected items from the Georgia Department of Education Student Health Survey, specifically items related to school connectedness and cultural acceptance. An additional potential source of evidence for belonging would be student attendance Potential sources to monitor discrimination would include the monitoring of relevant administrative regulations. As you will probably see, there's a great deal of overlap between some of the indicators monitored as a part of the Equity Action Plan and this policy. We would analyze the disaggregated data related to discipline and academic performance, as well as growth. We would monitor program participation, such as gifted, talented, gifted and talented, IB, special education, and other programs, to determine whether or not inequities exist. In addition, we would analyze post-secondary outcomes and course enrollment. We would also analyze teacher and principal evaluations through teaks and leaks, specifically focusing on positive learning environment and school climate. We will use the policy monitoring template as outlined here, and that's pretty much it for this first presentation. We'll have some time now for discussion or any questions.
Who wants to go first?
You look ready, Louis, I'd say jump in.
No, I'm just looking for, for people, I mean, I have a comment or two, but I'll say first that I like this, I find this to be a nice way to, to do this, because I like to have a discussion first, so I think this is a promising start to our approach to this. Also, and generally, I don't have, you know, I think that your interpretation matches the intent of policy in, in my view, so I think that's good. I have a question specifically about the potential sources of evidence, and I haven't thought all this through.
That's fine.
But on belonging and interpretation, I particularly like the idea of using survey data to see how students actually feel, since that's the intent of the policy, so, you know, we've sort of been advocating for this somewhere for a long time, I like to see that there. I have a question, which is that, you know, coming out of the conference, the AB, the, what's that thing that we went to?
NSBA Conference.
The NSBA Conference in Philadelphia, one of the programs was a Gates Foundation kind of a spin-off, but basically it was a survey outfit that specializes in developing surveys that-
Actionable.
That are actionable, that ask questions in a way most likely to elicit useful information that we can actually act upon, and then, but also benchmark the answers against a national database.
And written to the reading level of the survey recipients.
And, and they went through quite, quite a number of examples of the, someone called it earlier, GEDAW, the Georgia DOE, I've never heard anybody use that.
GEDAW.
GEDAW, I like that.
Waiting for GEDAW.
Waiting for GEDAW, yes, but anyway, so they use examples of these state-sponsored surveys, which are trying to get at the same thing, but are just simply ineffective, and tend to ask questions in a way that just don't elicit useful information, and they, and I, I found it to be very persuasive in that this is worth looking into, and so I just once again suggest that we look into that, the tools that they have, which was a pretty reasonable price, I thought, it was a couple thousand dollars, to see if they've got some, and it would, you know, the information from it could go beyond this item to others, so that's, that's one suggestion that I have. I might have others on these, but they don't spring to mind on the other pieces of evidence, so.
Would there be any component potentially for parents, like a parent survey along the same lines?
Yes, I'm definitely interested in capturing some parent data. For this report, we have to report on the data we already have for, for last year, but in terms of next steps, we're looking at incorporating that. The new revisions to the Equity Action Plan will include some teacher measures, as well as some parent components as well, so going forward, we'll be able to include those.
I, I know that you're going to do this, but one, one step, if I can just jump in, is that, you know, part of this has been done, which is that you all have developed administrative regulations on, on these things, which we've looked at and, and I think are well-done, and so we just need to make sure that-
And to clarify, that, that will be part of the monitoring report, when we get to a policy that has required administrative regulations, part of the monitoring is, do we have those administrative regulations? Yeah, exactly.
I like where you're going with this, I think, I struggled just a little bit, because I wanted to shoehorn, and your teaks and leaks things kind of gives me a little bit of an opening to shoehorn, or at least cross-link this to another policy, which is 2.6.2 Recruiting, Retention. It'd be, you know, when we talk about equity and diversity, I think it's really important that our recruiting and our retention, and the distribution of the seniority level of our staff is something that we look at and make sure that we are the change that we want to see in our students. But that might be something that would, would first show up under a 2.6.2.
That's exactly what I would say.
But I would love, when that happens, for it to be cross-referenced from equity, even though it would be in a different section.
Sure.
Because it's linked.
As a part of this process, I'm just reconfirming whether I understand this, are the ARs also reviewed each time the policy report, monitoring report is done annually?
We have not set up a schedule like that, no.
Okay.
But in this case, we, we did the policy, so the ARs, this is the first time we've really seen the ARs, and this is an appropriate time to look at them.
And for Mark's benefit, the reason we're doing this, one, is last time we did one of these, we decided that we needed to go back and tweak the policy and be a little more clear on our expectations in certain areas, and so, to Heather's point, if we were to go through one of these, Phase One, Phase Two, and then circle back to the policy, I would expect that if we change a policy, then there would be a review.
Exactly.
But if we're just getting reports, and we're okaying the reports, and okay with the way things are, I wouldn't expect that.
And absent that happening, we have talked about different policies we feel, or different regulations we feel need a different cycle, right? Like, some of them are going to be pretty stable, and if you look at it every five years, you'll be good, others you probably want to look at every year, and so that's something that the people who are assigned to each admin reg have to make that decision of, absent some policy change that will require a change to the admin reg, or some legal change, right? Like, something might happen in the legal environment that will cause a staff to change, but absent that, they're to come up with a schedule for their ARs that they're responsible for, to see how often they need to be revised.
Okay, thank you.
Or at least reviewed.
Yeah, I mean, I, since we're talking about this particular one, I mean, I, I could envision a non-legal spur to a change in policy, because as I read this policy, and I don't know when it was last revised, but it sounds very similar to what was in place before.
Right.
And I'm wondering if the work that we're under, that you've been undertaking, and that now Dr. Banks is going to be leading, if that won't actually cause a desire to revisit this policy, which is beyond, of course, what we're talking about right now, but that, that to me, just kind of continuing this conversation, that strikes me as something that could happen.
Quite possibly, I could see that happen, but you're right, of all the policies, it's ironic, this one's probably almost verbatim from the previous board policy, because it was, has been a very stable policy for a long time in the district, you're right.
A few key items have been added, but, and one of the other things about this is, it's our intention, I mean, we've been amending the policy manual almost every meeting, now, a lot of that has been just typos and corrections, but, but the idea is to actually use this thing and keep it up to date and revisit it frequently as needed, and so if we have a need next month, we should start the process, right?
Yep, yep.
And we've been very deliberate about trying to separate out those policies required by law, or at least make them very visible versus the board's policies for the board, governing the board and management, so that it's shrunk a lot, and it's much shorter, and much more of, you know, the things that are not the business of the board, that are administrative regulations, have been classified as administrative regulations.
Yep, makes good sense.
Any other feedback before we move on to Stage Two with that report?
I think it sounds like a good process.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Holliston. Okay, our next item is academic calendars.
All right, this is going to be fun. Let's see, where do we start? I think we'll start with this one. This is, this is two-sided.
Is that what's on the wall?
This is what's on the wall, printed in a handheld size, but none of you will be able to read, maybe you will, but this is just a reminder of what, what we're about to talk about.
So, how about, you can pull it, pull it up and you can zoom in, like if you pull it up online?
There will be a quiz.
Like zoom in and you-
You can pull it up online and zoom in, that's correct.
Yeah.
Oh, wait.
It's pretty awesome.
I only passed over two, but.
It's, it's not just, it's pretty awesome.
Anybody have any reading glasses?
Sorry, actually, this is a little bit more legible format that I'll be referring to, so if you can each take one of these. So, if you haven't yet had a chance to review the survey data, you may recall, before school left out last year, we let up, we opened up a survey to the community about calendars, we got great input, and I've linked it in the board item, we solicited feedback on the tentative calendar we had approved last August, which would be the 2020, 2021 calendar, as well as feedback to develop a new tentative calendar for 2021, 22. Just a reminder, our, our process has been that in the fall, we approve the following year's calendar and a tentative version of the year after that, and so that's why those two were the focus of the survey. We also asked just general questions, the, what I called calendar development parameters, just about philosophies, basically, about what it is people wanted to see in a calendar, and then I also highlighted some differences, because there were some results that are significantly different between two different groups, namely, parents and teachers, and so I think it's important to see where those preferences are significantly different. If I didn't highlight it, most likely they answered similarly. So, I'll, I'll kind of cut to the chase, the overall feedback overwhelmingly was, they like that we don't begin before August first, they really want us to end preferably before Memorial Day, but at least don't go into June, was the, the overall feedback. People were a little bit split on the addition of extra days, you may recall, we've built in two or three extra days into the calendar for snow days, or other days, like, here, it's not really snow days, it's more like the water doesn't work, or the power doesn't turn on or something, but that, I think people appreciated the concept, but they did not like the fact that it often pushed us into June. And so I think people now, having kind of had that experiment, are okay with us saying, we tried it, it, we don't need it. They are very protective of the days for like fall break and winter break, of not using those as makeup days, and things like that. So, basically, I spent, it felt like about two or three entire days, living and breathing calendars, which is where the giant poster came from, because as I was doing it, I decided I would just plan through the year that I'm going to retire.
Awesome.
So, that, that calendar goes through the year I'm going to retire, and if I don't retire that year, then I don't know who's doing the calendars, but I'm not. But, the, the concept there, and the idea, and you can actually see it on that tiny version, because it's really about the patterns. What I did is I aligned all of those years on MLK Day, because you just kind of have to pick, you don't want to align them on, on July first, just because that's not how most holidays work, right? Most holidays are like MLK Day, where it's the third Monday of January, for instance, and so I aligned everything on MLK Day, that's why there's that, that line right down the middle, more or less, and then just looked at everything from that point. And so what I did, as I was starting to develop these, oh, and just to clarify on the chart, the other thing we hear all the time is, well, we used to, right? And so what you'll see there is actually, there's a red line, which is this year's calendar, everything above that is previous year's calendars. calendars. So you can look and see, well, did we really used to do that or not, right? Because it's actually there. And then after that are all the, the future years. So, basically, the process was, I tried not to start later, I tried not to start earlier than the first Wednesday in August. That was my first goal. And so I would kick off the calendar by starting with the first Wednesday in Au, August. I would count how many days I had until Memorial Day, and see how much room I have for putting in the other breaks. And it quickly became apparent that if we're gonna offer our teachers any workdays, the only way to really do that is to move fall break to coincide with Labor Day, is one of the key ways to do it. Because when you have fall break a different week than Labor Day, you're basically giving up one of those days. And so you will see on every one of these calendars that fall break aligns with Labor Day, and when you look at this calendar, you can see where there used to be a week or two between Labor Day and fall break, but it changes moving forward. And what that does is, it basically buys you an extra day during the year to keep you from having to go that extra day longer, but you still have that week-long break. The other thing that is present there, I, I got rid of the November election day that we have typically had as a work, or PL day, because we have now gotten polling places out of our schools, and so it's not nearly as critical to have that as a day off. It was always a little bit weird taking a Tuesday off, but it was for very good reasons, right, that it was happening. And that way also, if we're in school on that day, and there are classes that want to do something, that curricularly with election day, it just makes a really natural time to do it, that the election is happening right before you. So you'll see that's gone. There are two teacher workdays built into the school year, which I just arbitrarily put at the day after holiday break and the day after spring break. And the only reason I put them there is because the, it's traditionally, we have come back the day after holiday break and had a workday, which is very popular, gets you, a chance to get started for second semester. And that end-of-year push, there's often a lot of stuff you have to do near the end of the year, which is why I put it the day after spring break. The other advantage of doing it that way is that for families that aren't teachers, it extends their holiday just a little bit, and then it gives teachers that boost. Those days could be moved, right? So if we got feedback from teachers and they said, no, we really want one in the fall, we don't want one in April as much, you could move it and it wouldn't change the overall calendar from the perspective of a parent, for instance. They would still have the same start and end date. The calendar still has five days built in for fall break, one of them being Labor Day. Still has five days built in for Thanksgiving. In general, it has two weeks, two sets of five days built in for the holiday break, although every once in a while, you have some weird years. And so what I did is, instead of starting it on a Monday and ending it on a Friday, I started it on a Wednesday and ended it on a Tuesday, for instance. So you actually only lose one day, including the weekends. So it's really almost the exact same length of break. You still have one week for a winter break in February, and then the spring break is scheduled the, the week of the first Monday in April, which everyone tells me is an agreement amongst the metro area school districts, which I've never seen or had anyone actually tell me officially, but it seems to work out. And so, somebody at some point agreed to that, and, and people keep doing it. And you'll see, there's actually one weird year there, about halfway down, where spring break actually is kind of a week earlier. And you can blame most of those weird anomalies on leap years. The leap years mess everything up and make it really complicated. But in general, over and over again, we are able, with this approach, to end before Memorial Day. The majority of the years end the Friday before Memorial Day. We would have a lot more teacher workdays at the front and the end, traditionally. And if you look really carefully, and you probably would have to look up there, I've actually highlighted, the, the text is in yellow for the teacher workdays. But ta, typically, what we were able to do is, we'd have two post-planning days at the end of the year, and we have five pre-planning days at the beginning of the year, which worked out really well. And so, it works pretty nicely. I really feel like it's a good balance between what parents want and what teachers want, and trying to kind of split the baby, so to speak, of how can we try to make as many people ha, have a good calendar as possible. This is the initial discussion about the calendar. The next step, you may recall, we used to have a calendar committee. One of the things we changed is technically the SCLT now is our calendar committee. We were trying to think of what are some important tasks that SCLT could do, and that was one of them. And so we have an SCLT meeting next, next Tuesday, is that right? Next Tuesday? And so, that's one of the reasons that poster is up there. We will discuss with them everything that I've discussed tonight. But we wanted to bring these in case you had feedback that we needed to vet with the SCLT about what your thoughts are regarding the calendars and what they look like. But, the last thing I have to share with you is just, so you can get a feel for what changed. This is, if we move forward with these changes, I've done a, I was gonna say red line, but Google does it as green line, because of course, they're different. A green line document showing how the administrative regulation would change if we adopted this philosophy for how to develop calendars. So it just makes it a little easier to figure out what exactly it is that's, that's changing. So, that was a lot, but that's the gist of it. I feel really good about the calendars. I went ahead on the, on this one, and put years beyond 2021, 22, just because I had room. And then if you flip over, you'll see the dates in text format. I marked in red any of the breaks. I marked in italics, major holidays for Christians, Muslims, and, what's the other one?
Jewish.
Jewish holidays are on there as well. So I've marked those on there. So sometimes it's hard to kind of read what these things are saying, so if you just want the words, flip it over, and it's there. So, that's the gist of it, very quickly. Any questions or comments that I should share with SCLT, or-
Yes.
-other thoughts?
I wanted to say this is a fantastic, one of the most thorough calendar studies that may have ever been performed.
I'm gonna send it to all the other superintendents if we-
Yes.
-if we get it figured out and say, don't you dare schedule a break differently than this.
And I appreciate your effort to get community input. I read through hundreds of the comments, and there were many, many hundreds, I think over 600-
Yep.
-in the one link that was there. There might have been more. But I also appreciate how you summarize them into six charts. Because it's, after reading, you know, several dozen and then several hundred comments, you, you do see a trend.
Yes.
And so it becomes apparent what people prefer. But then there's two sides to that, and, and I think one of our challenges has always been, how do we balance not only what parents want, but what teachers need? And sometimes we forget that teachers come in before and after breaks to do their workdays. And so, starting on a Monday means they come in on a Friday. And that might make their, you know, be the day after New Year's, or whatever it is. So, thank you for taking all of those things into consideration and for boiling it down, and for also looking into the past, because we've also heard, well, we've never gotten out after Memorial Day, and that's not true.
Right.
And we've heard lots of things which become the truth if they're said repeatedly, but now we can actually look back.
That's right.
And so that's very helpful. So thank you first, is what I want to say. And I'll, I'll let others comment, and then I have a few comments.
The, I would absolutely agree that the depth of the work is pretty astounding. I, I fear for your, your social life, but otherwise, it's, it's quite impressive. The, the ones that I focused in on were, and I'm sure things have progressed, but anyways, where the, the time between the first break was extraordinarily short, as an example, or the time between the first and the second break were extraordinarily long. So I guess I'm, I'm looking for kind of the ramifications of that, and, yeah, that's basically-
No, I think it's a great observation. And if you, if you look, you can see that big hole right there.
Yeah, 24, 25, 25, 26, 31, 30, yeah.
There's just these big, you know, especially moving fall break to coincide with Labor Day, you end up with a really long, like, October, there's nothing in any of these.
Yeah.
There's not a break. And traditionally, you'll see there have been several Octobers when we have had breaks. So, it wouldn't surprise me if some of the feedback from teachers would be, okay, that's pretty long.
Yeah.
And maybe we could use some time in the middle to do mid-terms or something like that. The other thing I think that we need to look into further, and you'll see, there was actually the feedback on there, that it's wildly popular with the teachers, not quite as popular with parents, which is putting in some early scheduled early dismissal days. So there's still student attendance days, but we know there are certain days that we need to prep for conferences, or have conferences, or things like that. And I think we still need to be discussing that, and looking into potentially scheduling some of those during those periods, because we are, we are doing things like evening conferences. And we may be able to offer some times to parents that aren't in the evening, for those who can't do an evening conference, for instance. So that's something to explore as well, but that is a long gap, and it won't surprise me if we do gather more input on this, if that will not be pointed out, that people are concerned with that.
And, and I would add to that, to thank you, it sounds like still very much an open dialogue. Certainly, when we went to this general direction on this calendar, there was tremendous pushback. And so my takeaway from that is, sometimes the, until people have experienced it, they don't quite understand what's gonna happen. And so I think if we venture into these changes with the attitude of, this is what we're gonna try, and we'll learn from it, and we'll adjust, I think that's a great approach. But I do think gently explaining that we're gonna try something like this is a really good way to move forward. I, and I, and I say this carefully, but maybe not carefully enough, I, when there's a real tension between parent and teacher, I think it's very important to understand what the teachers are gonna have to give up if we go with what the parents are demanding. So those are the, in particular, the ones where I feel like, let's, let's try it and see what might happen.
Right. Great point, great point.
Just, I think my, my biggest, or one of my few and only, but one of my main concerns was really the Labor Day, making that the fall break, because, because I feel like it's almost too soon after school starts, especially for the little kids, because, you know, for the kindergartners and the first graders. And I know in the elementary level, there's the, a big deal is made out of the first six weeks. And it even has a name, something classroom, what is it? The, the teachers, for example-
That's when they don't smile, right?
They, they don't, you know, they don't allow parents in, in the classroom, they don't allow parents, you know, for the most part, to come to lunches, because they're really trying to get the kids acclimated. And so my concern is that when, when that break occurs only for, and in the distant, more distant future, three weeks after school is in session, that it's interrupting getting the kids into a groove. And I also liked that it previously more or less aligned with finishing the first term. And I realize that we are gaining a day by combining it with Labor Day, but I feel like we might be giving up more than what we're gaining there. And I noticed that not on any other year, until further out, are we ever up against August 1st. And people have gotten used to that we started August 1st several years now, and, you know, it's, you know, in, in some of these calendars, we do have a little bit of bu, buffer, because we're starting, you know, we're proposing to start August 5th in 2020, and August 4th in 2021. And so, I don't know if there's a magic to that Wednesday, but this year, we started Thursday, and maybe we could start on a Tuesday. Maybe that would be-
And there are some in the future that have to start on Tuesday, that's right.
Yeah. But maybe, you know, maybe that's where we could give a day, and just because we, we really, I feel like we have that flex up until August 1st. And then maybe that would be, in my opinion, it would be worth moving that fall break out, so that it more, also more equally spaces the time period between that break and the next November break. Also, because we have also taken away the Columbus Day holiday and the Election Day holiday, which I'm glad, because I feel like those kind of are unnecessary and felt like interruptions. But I think that, that's probably my primary comment.
And I think you hit the nail on the head, and I think it would be a great survey question to say, like, you could move this, and it would mean starting one day earlier, right? Because that is exactly what you would have to do. If you moved it, that's where the flexibility is.
Right.
If you still want five days for fall break-
Right.
You move a day earlier, and none of them would be before August 1st, to your point. Some of them would be five-day weeks.
Right.
And it really was nice, starting with a three-day week, right?
It really, it really was.
It is nice, starting with less than a full week. The other thing that some school districts do is, they don't have a full day every day of the first week.
Right.
So they might have a two-hour early dismissal the first five days, or the first three days, or something.
Right.
Because they are doing so much with, it's just learning expectations of the classrooms, it's learning routines, it's learning how to get around the building, it's things like that. And that can be exhausting, especially for younger students. So that's another approach we could, we could consider looking at.
So, since my comment's on the same, same topic, maybe I'll jump in. And so I'm reluctant to, to, to just, you know, I'm always sort of, you know, talk about your own personal preference on things. But I will tell you that the, the September break has become, that is our primary vacation time in my family. And the reason is, it's impossible to schedule anything during the summer, with all the various kids' activities that start at different times. So we can never find a family, family vacation when we're all of us home. September break is one when it's not long enough that you've got six different little camps that are gonna start at different times.
Mm-hmm.
And so everybody's home, we can take a trip. We're not gonna be able to do that if it starts on Labor Day, because Labor Day kind of wrecks it for a number of reasons. One is plane tickets, it's just much harder to travel on, on Labor Day.
Yep.
The other, there's all kind of other activities that you might want to do on Labor Day, and kind of institutional things. And it's just not gonna be the same. And so from my, I know that my family's perspective would be, we would just be crestfallen if we, it would essentially be losing our, our fall break.
Sure, that's a great point.
And so for that reason, if I had it, I'd put all my cards on a day early, rather than, you know, all my preference points would go that direction.
Right, okay.
And if that's all the, if that's the only cost, is that you had to start a day early, but still after August 1, to me, that would be a, a very strong preference.
Okay.
I have a question about professional learning days.
Yes.
And because we're taking away the one for Columbus Day and the one for-
So we're not taking away, we're moving them?
Moving them, sorry. We are moving them to-
Before school starts, basically.
Right. So after New Year's and after spring break, right?
Well, really, what we're doing, because there's already the, the workdays built in, we're moving all the PL days to be before school-
To before, okay.
Pretty much. There's five days before school, that way.
Right, okay. So because we're moving them, they used to be counted as possible makeup days. And so, I'm, I know that two years ago was really unusual, but we did have kind of a crazy year that year, with hurricane and-
Yeah.
-snow and water main breaks. And so that was when we reacted and tried to build in some more potential makeup days. And we also added two days to the school year.
Right.
And I realize, you know, now we haven't had that for a year, and, you know, memories fade, and-
Yeah.
-maybe that was an anomaly, and we don't think that's gonna happen every year, and maybe we were too conservative. But I'm just curious about what is our, what is our plan if we exceed, and what is the X amount of days for, you know, ma, not missing too much school?
I'll, I'll tell you what I, what my feeling is of the temperature of the community and the plan would be.
Mm-hmm.
If it's not extreme, like, beyond five days, I think most people don't want to make up the days.
Okay.
I think there's actually quite a bit of support for, set the calendar, stick to the calendar, don't have these makeup days where now I can't play in my summer, because now there might be a makeup day. Or for teachers, don't use the day back from holiday break, that's my workday. I, like, I needed that.
Yeah.
And now you're taking that away. And to your point, that now means I gotta come back on Sunday, or on Friday, or whatever, to do whatever I was gonna do. I do think the vast majority feel that way. I will share, too, I've had a lot of people share with me Cobb County's calendar, and say, why can't we do this? And I was looking at it and trying to figure out, well, how can they possibly do this? Like, I have lived and breathed these calendars, that is not possible, till I realized, they're not scheduling 180 days. They are scheduling 177 days. They are just automatically not, they're just assuming that they're not gonna, they're not gonna have three days, right off the bat. They are only scheduling 177 days. Well, so yeah, now you can end before Memorial Day, and you can start after August 1st, because you're not even scheduling 180 days. So I do think that there's, there's pretty broad support to that. Now, their answer would be, well, we have these digital learning days instead, so if we happen to have- Now their answer would be, well, we have these digital learning days instead, so if we happen to have a day, then we provide these digital learning days and kids are supposed to learn from home. And, you know, we've talked about that briefly before of just, does that really, are kids really learning from home? What about equitable access? How are they able to get online? What are they doing, et cetera? So. But there are other, that, that will come up and I have had that calendar shared with me several times, but. So, yeah, so I would say, I think the feeling is, yes, we overreacted after that extreme and that for the majority of people. Now, we will still hear from people who see it as us not fulfilling our duty to make up every single day. And there are always the concerns of, if you don't make up the day, that means that I don't have a way to make up my time for work because I had to take it on that other day to watch the kids and whatnot. Some of that I think we're just not gonna work through. The vast majority of the support would be, do the hundred and eighty days if it keeps us from going into June. And do not schedule makeup days potential after that, because then the feeling is you can't schedule anything unless that happens, so.
Well, and it was, it was pretty clear from all of the comments that, that going into June was, was very undesirable.
Correct.
And
Very undesirable.
This, this year, we are scheduled to go through June second. So we're scheduled to go two days into June. And our student days are a hundred and eighty-two days. Not a hundred and eighty like every other year we've planned out into the future, or like every other year except for this past year. So, I'm going to ask the question, is that something we should relook at?
I think it would be, I think it's quite possible that if you would like, one of the things when we send out kind of the next survey for this, we could ask, would you be interested in the board designated June first and second of this coming June as makeup days? And that we planned to end May twenty-ninth. My guess would be, most people would, would be pleased that they're not gonna worry too much about a change like that. But yeah, it's definitely something we could include in the survey to see if that was something people would be interested in.
Yeah. And, and I thought, I've thought about it, you know, and I don't, I'm not just wanting to take away two days, but we do, we, you know, we do as a norm have a hundred and eighty days. And just a suggestion, and this might not be a good one, but it'd be for the committee and teachers and parents to weigh in on, but more, not this past year, but the year before, we, like if we were concerned, for example, about not having a hundred and eighty-two days and we maybe wanted to look for ways to, to make up at least one of those days if we needed to, that March sixteenth date was a date that we had school two years ago, the year before last.
Correct.
And I don't know if that would be something we could, we could have school that day and then basically, you know, reduce it to get rid of one of the days, but just move one of the days.
Yeah, and I think in the advertised calendar for this year, I believe, October fourteen, November five and March sixteenth are designated as potential makeup days.
They are.
If I remember correctly.
And I'm, I'm saying make it a school day.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay.
Then remove a day off the, and then we're really only one day over. And then I feel like it's really a much easier decision.
And I would say.
Unless it affects teachers, right?
And it does, because potentially then, because if we end up needing, if we end up meeting this entire hundred and eighty-two days, we've got two extra days that we need to pay teachers for. And so the idea of building it in is, you're always gonna have at least two days somewhere. Well, maybe not, right? And so if we did, if the community supported designated June one and two as ma- as potential makeup days, but not scheduled as school days, so school would be scheduled in May twenty-ninth.
Right.
Then we would not have to figure out how to pay teachers for two more days if we ended up having no.
Okay. Right, so that might be the preferred way to do it? Okay, so I'm, I'm interested in that because I've heard from a lot of people that there's conflicts because in our region, most schools get out sooner and many of the academic camps and the internships and the sports camps and just things that kids would participate in start in June, if not sooner.
Too, because like APS and Fulton started yesterday. And so it's amazing, a lot of them are getting rid of, and they're just compressing their calendars a lot more. I do think our survey showed, we have broad support for having a lot of these breaks. I think that's still very popular. Just don't take it to the extreme.
Right, I agree. And I saw that too. And so, I feel like where you're headed in yours forward is the right direction. And I just, you know, I, I hate to have to tweak this calendar, but it's at the very, very end of the year and many plans have not been made yet. And I, I think that if we don't look at it and really consider that, we'll probably end up with a lot of feedback in the spring when it's too late, when people are actually realizing what's happening.
And they're planning out their May.
Exactly. So I, you know, as much as I don't like to have to touch it, I feel like it might be a good thing to.
We will figure out a way, because a- after the SCLT meeting, I wanna send out one more survey before we come back to you based on kind of these kind of questions.
Okay.
And we'll figure out a way to ask that in the survey.
If I may, sorry, Tasha, go ahead.
Oh, no, I'm good.
I just wanted to thank you, this is, looks like a tremendous effort to balance the balanced calendar against parent-teacher concerns. Against those summer opportunities that go away if we go too long. And, you know, there's just all these mutually exclusive constraints that make this a rug that will never quite fit in the room. The things I've heard over and over again, which I just wanna make sure I reiterate and hopefully I'm summarizing and not just reiterating, is that the things, the, the, the hotspots seem to be the teacher workdays and the, the fall break, which then creates the long subsequent term or some, a non-break. And I also heard that we'd be willing to start earlier if that gains us something without pushing things to June first. And if gaining something, I assume means teacher workdays or being able to address that fall break issue. So, the last thing I wanted to say is, I, I was gonna ask about the hundred and eighty-two, hundred and eighty-three days, it is a hundred and eighty now. I'd be willing to revisit the makeup day thing. I would love for us to, to break that, that cognitive barrier where we associate learning with the time that a child sits in a chair. And so anything that, 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 you know, if we, if you have to face that one and, and parents are saying, well, seven, a hundred and seventy-seven days, a hundred and eighty days, let's face it. As long as we're making, you know, progress like we heard from Claremont today, where seventy-five percent of the kids are passing their, their growth targets, where you only expect fifty-two, then all of our kids are gonna be learning more than you would expect them to learn in a year in any other school district or most other school districts. So, teacher workdays, fall break, start earlier if it gains us something without pushing this into June. Sounds good. Really, this is a tremendous amount of work. And you can just see, just looking at it, all the little, the gains.
Yeah. Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right.
The next and only other item.
Well, can we talk future dates before we get into board work? Oh yeah, okay. So with future dates, a couple of things. The, at the September meeting, I'd like to have Noel bring you our facilities planning engagement, like a framework after he's met with his operations advisory committee, to give you an update on kind of what we're planning to do for engaging with the facilities plan before we actually plan it. So that you have an opportunity to give us some input and say, yes, it looks good, or what about this, or you should add this, whatever. Does that sound okay?
What do you think, your facilities planning engagement?
Yeah, I, well, I called it the facilities planning engagement framework.
Good.
Because I, just getting some thoughts of what it's gonna look like before we actually plan it all out. We're also, just to give you a heads up, Mrs. Wilson is, is reconsidering having the M on the name of the building. Remember, it's the M Elizabeth Wilson, because that form is her formal name. She's having second thoughts about whether or not she wants the M on it and may want it just to say Elizabeth Wilson. So, once she decides, we will probably, if she decides she wants to drop the M, we have no issue with that, but we will bring a consent agenda item. If she decides that, just because you officially named it, we'll need you to officially rename it. And then we're working on getting all that planned and figuring out when we can do signage and ceremony and all that kind of stuff. So, I just wanted to give you a heads up, if you see that on the agenda, that's why. The, and then we have two work sessions coming up, August twenty-seventh and December, or not December, October twenty-second, August twenty-seventh and October twenty-second. And we just need to figure out what topics we wanna do for those.
August twenty-seven and?
August twenty-seven and October twenty-second.
Thank you.
August twenty-seven is curriculum night somewhere.
Is it really?
I have it in my calendar, but I don't have it at school.
Okay. Let me see. We did have a challenge this year with people not looking at the board calendar when they scheduled curriculum nights. Why, oh wait, I was clicking the wrong button. I don't even have it on the district events calendar. Do you guys know August twenty-seventh?
You know who has a curriculum night that night?
It may be DHS, actually.
It's DHS.
There's a curriculum night. For the high school, Title I parent input.
For the high school.
So the high school curriculum night is August twenty-seventh? Well, I guess I'll have to move it.
Unless people have it on their calendars or are planning for it.
I think they've been advertising it. I mean, we only set the calendar two years ago. We'll have to work on that. So, we may want to reschedule that. Well, I'll double check on that, but we still should pick a topic.
Is Monday, I mean, we could, does Monday work for people, the twenty-sixth?
You wanna reschedule the board meeting?
No, it works.
The work session, August twenty-seventh.
I'd like to get it on the calendar if we could.
Yeah, I believe the.
August twenty-seventh, August twenty-sixth works for me.
Works for me.
It looks like it works for me.
Yes. All right, we will update that to August twenty-seventh, or twenty-sixth, thank you. I have so many dates floating around my head right now.
It's because of this.
Yeah, can't imagine where that came from.
That's exactly why.
All right, twenty-sixth.
Okay, so what work session topics do we wanna focus on first?
Well, one thing, following up, which I appreciate everybody's, appreciated everybody sort of tolerating our last work session, which I found.
Great.
It was very.
Very good.
To go through and sort of catch what needs to be done. And the thing that rose to the top, I sort of went through and I've been making lists about what we need to be doing. And I think the, the biggest item is that we've got this big pause on the ends policies, that we just have to get done. And we just can't sit here and stress over it. We have to decide what they're gonna be and make an agreement for now that is what it's gonna, you know. So I'd like to try to make progress on that. We, you know, we left the meeting and we keep acknowledging that we need to do it, never having a plan. But maybe on the twenty-sixth, we could devote it to that, to that.
I think it's a great idea.
And maybe in advance, we can trade some drafts, get some ideas on the table so that we can come to the meeting kind of ready to go.
Awesome. Do we wanna wait on October? I mean, it's a little ways out.
Maybe.
We could see what comes onto this, because we may end up wanting a second ends policies, or we may wanna start.
Might have to do the work session in September?
No, because it's fall break.
Okay.
I'm, I'm fine waiting to schedule it, because I think we should hold the date, because there's something we need to do.
Absolutely, yep. And we will have gone to Colorado by then, too.
And we should have the report from GSE by then.
Yes, that's right. That's all I had for some things we wanted, I wanted to make sure we talked through.
Miss, I mean, you've presented the work plan, which I appreciate, but there's, that's, does it really need required discussion?
It does not, nope.
I have one, just one comment on that. And, oh, not the work plan, sorry, I'm skipping ahead.
To the.
The board policy monitoring calendar.
Yeah, that's, that's the only thing we actually have on the work plan, so.
Okay. Just in terms of school safety, I noticed that that one was in, to be brought to the board like in a rough, you know, the first round in November. But that one is one that I feel, maybe if we're doing these annually, it should be more toward the beginning of the year. Maybe not August, but maybe September, once everybody's gotten into their buildings, just because we always have new staff and we might have new buildings.
Yeah, the only reason we hadn't done September, I agree totally, we could move it to September, is because the ends policies, we had so many scheduled in September previously, so maybe instead we move those and we move the safety one to September, that would be fine.
I just feel like it's timely. I mean, August might be too premature because I feel like, you know, people are just getting in the door, but maybe that I give a, you know, a month of breathing to, then we can make sure that we have the plan for the year and, you know, and just that it's on our minds, because I feel like it's so important.
That's not a problem.
Okay. Otherwise, I like the, I like the monitoring calendar very much.
It helps us too to kind of manage workload and things, so we can see, that's why we put all four phases on there, so we can kind of see. And it helps when we go to do the board agenda, we can just look and see what phase everything is in. We're also working on the page for where all of this stuff will be housed. That was one of the things we talked about at the work session.
Were you able to read my, I sent an email with examples, did it come through?
I don't remember seeing that. I'll, I'll look for it.
My, we had a, I'll share it with you, we had an issue where some of my emails got eaten by a security.
Okay.
Over active security things, so.
This one must have gotten eaten if I didn't see it, because I never have missed an email.
Okay, all right, that's, we have an ease for, for an executive session?
Move to enter executive session to discuss personnel matters?
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, so this meeting is, I think adjourned, isn't it, Brown?
Yeah.
Good memories coming back.